Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, December 12th, 2019. Opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Comcast Systems, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the fourth day of December 2019. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole? Mr. Cohen? Mr. Oakman? Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. As those of you who have read the notice realize we are about to go into an executive session. And let me read the resolution for the executive session. Whereas New Jersey Statute 2-4 to 12, Open Public Meetings Act permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Princeton Planning Board, Mercer County, State of New Jersey, as follows. One, the public shall be excluded from discussion of hereafter specified subject matters. Two, the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. A, litigation on affordable housing declaratory judgment action update. Three, it is anticipated at this time that the above matter will be made public upon completion of the litigation, including any appeals. This resolution shall take effect immediately. And I believe we're going to move into meeting room A.
Yes.
So...
Do you think we can move that resolution and vote on it?
Move the resolution?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Motion for someone to go back?
Move we go back into open session.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let me just check. Does anyone have any announcements? We're at sort of that point of the agenda. Anybody? All right, hearing none. Let's move on to the findings of fact. The first set is Kevin McCarthy. This is from October 3rd. Any additions? There were corrections, right?
Yeah, there was a distribution of one sheet of a request that the attorney made.
Okay. Did all of you have a chance to check that sheet? Does anyone have any other corrections? If not, can we... Can I have a motion to accept these findings with the correction? Anyone?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The second set of findings of fact is David Burrell. This is also from October, but it's October 10th. It was a minor subdivision on Jefferson Road. Any additions, corrections? Anyone?
Move approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next one...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to abstain on that one and also the next one because I was not here for either of those meetings, so thanks.
Wait a minute.
I need to abstain too for that one.
Next, two next ones?
No, Burrell.
Okay. I'm going to ask Jerry Mueller if he'll do that since I recuse myself for this application.
This was a two lot subdivision on Walnut and Princeton Kingston Road, and one of the lots, as a result of the subdivision, would be vacant. There was, I think, as I recall, accessory structures on it that were to be removed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing Burrell.
Okay. Finish? Did we finish with Burrell?
Yes.
Okay. Trustees of Princeton University. This was an application by the university for preliminary and final site plan for the two residential colleges that it's intending to build. It's increasing its student population by 500. Each residential college will house 500 students, as well as, I think, a head of faculty member and some resident advisors. And then there would be an additional... In addition to the 500, which would be made up of the additional population, students would be basically... Some of the dorm rooms in the existing dorms would be decommissioned and the dormitories would be repurposed. So that's what that was all about, and then there were a number of conditions.
Excuse me, Mr. Mueller. The attorney for the applicant has also asked for additional language that was distributed to the board, so I need you to also approve the resolution with that amendment.
And that's been circulated, I think, to everybody. That's on pages four and 14? That's on pages four and 14?
Yes.
Yeah. Does everybody have that? Okay. So that's additional language that the university wanted, which is certainly fine with me.
Okay. Better ask somebody to move that.
Yeah. Anybody to... Will somebody move approval of the resolution?
I'll move approval with the changes noted.
You second?
Second.
Okay. March, could you call the roll?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mrs. Stankiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Jerry. Now, let's move on to...
Hmm?
Let's move on to the first hearing of this evening. This is redevelopment of Thanet Properties. Mr. Muleplace, are you going to start us off on that or at least introduce?
Michael, this is a formal hearing, so I'm going to swear. And if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed?
I do. Good evening. The first item on the agenda, the first hearing that we have, is a referral from the municipal council for the planning board to consider an area in need of non-condemnation redevelopment. It is known generally as one of the sites on Thanet Drive, 101 Thanet Drive is the address. It's... Thanet Drive is located right off of Turhune Road, just north of the Princeton Shopping Center area and not far from just east of Harrison Street. The proposal is to look at the current site, which currently is largely taken up by surface parking lots, and there's two office buildings. And the office buildings are currently very underutilized and empty and have been difficult to market in recent years. So this evening you'll be hearing from our consultant, Burgess Associates Planner, John Zabo, will be telling you about the report that was issued to the planning board to look at this site to see if it's a good candidate for redevelopment status.
And Michael, why don't you mark that as Exhibit PB1? If you could, John, if you could raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
May I be seated? My full name is John, middle initial P, Zabo, S-Z-A-B-O, Jr. I am a senior associate with Burgess Associates. Our business address is 25 Westwood Avenue, Westwood, New Jersey. For the record, I'd just like to indicate that as a senior associate, I am a licensed professional planner, and my license is in good standing with the board and has always been maintained as such since 1986. Madam Chair and members of the board, we're here to discuss the investigation report on Thanet Road, a property identified as 101 Thanet Road. And what I'd like to do is walk the board through our investigation and the report and how we reach our conclusions. The report, for the record, that we are referring to is entitled "Tenet Site: Area in Need of Redevelopment Studying Non-Condemnation," and its draft version dated November 18th, 2019. What we will be doing tonight is I will be also incorporating some amendments or as by an addendum. I'll testify to that, and then eventually I'll go through those addendums to incorporate that, and so we'll be subsequently amending our report accordingly as I testify to it. Now, by way of background, the local redevelopment and housing law was adopted by the state legislature in 1992, and what it did was it consolidated a variety of state redevelopment statutes into one law. It made it very efficient, it cleaned it up, and it also granted additional powers to municipalities. And what it was intended to do was to provide municipalities planning and financial tools to deal with disinvestment and development conditions that results in deteriorated housing, deteriorated commercial industrial buildings and facilities that adversely impact communities and neighborhoods. And what it does is it provides municipalities the statutory authority to engage in a number of redevelopment activities, and these are significant. For example, municipality can adopt a redevelopment plan that will identify the manner in which an area can be developed and prescribe its use and intensity of use. You can issue bonds for the purposes of redevelopment. You can acquire property through eminent domain, and I'll talk to that in a moment. So you have the power of condemnation. You can lease or convey property without having to go through the public bidding process, so it greatly expedites the disposition of land. And you can collect revenue from a selected developer, and you can grant, significantly grant, tax exemptions and abatements. So the local redevelopment housing law prescribes a very specific process. You have to follow it exactly. And that process has to start with the governing body. The governing body has to authorize the planning board to conduct an investigation. That begins the process and procedure by which you start your investigation. And so that when it gets referred to the planning board, as it has this evening, what happens then is you conduct an investigation. You prepare a report, you prepare a map, and you come to some conclusions in your investigation. And then you have to set a public hearing, and that public hearing has to be duly advertised as it has been for this evening. And then once you have your public hearing, you then adopt a recommendation to the governing body as to whether or not the area that the council, the governing body is asking you to investigate, does or does not qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. In the resolution that is adopted by the governing body, it's very important and required by law that the council, in its resolution, specify whether or not it's going to exercise its power of eminent domain. And that is why the resolution will say condemnation or non-condemnation, and that is required. You have to tell the public at the very outset of the process early whether or not there's an intention to take land. This process, the one that the council has authorized under this resolution, is non-condemnation, so there's no intention to acquire property through eminent domain. Once you conduct your public hearing and the planning board adopts a recommendation, if that is a favorable recommendation, that an area is indeed qualified as an area in need of redevelopment, that is sent over to the governing body. And then the governing body adopts a resolution, either endorsing the recommendation of the planning board, modifying the recommendation of the planning board, or rejecting the recommendation of the planning board. Once, assuming the recommendation is endorsed, the council then authorizes by resolution the preparation of a redevelopment plan. The only purpose we have here tonight is whether to determine if the area at Thanet is in fact qualified as an area in need of redevelopment. However, if it goes along the process and we get to council and they... And this board recommends that, and the council endorses that designation, then they will authorize the preparation of a redevelopment plan. Now, that plan can be prepared by the planning board. The planning board can be authorized to do it, or it can be done by a redevelopment agency. If it's done by the planning board, then you prepare the plan, you send it to the council, and then they review it and adopt it as an ordinance. If it's done by a redevelopment agency, the plan then that's prepared by that agency is then referred back to the planning board for consistency review with your master plan. So you have input in either process, and that's the connectivity between planning and redevelopment that the community is looking to endorse. Once the redevelopment plan is prepared, it gets adopted as an ordinance, and in fact it becomes the zoning for that parcel. And what we typically do when we prepare that redevelopment plan, which becomes the ordinance, we codify it and we incorporate it into your zoning ordinance. Now, for the record, the Princeton Mayor and Council adopted a resolution directing the planning board to undertake a preliminary investigation by resolution adopted on October 14th, 2019, so you have the proper authorization to proceed. And again, I think it bears repeating that this is a non-condemnation investigation. Now, there... You heard me refer to statutory criteria. In order to designate an area, an area in need of redevelopment, you have to meet at least one of eight statutory conditions. At least one. I'm not going to go through all eight of them. They're summarized in the report. I'm going to focus on three that are... That is of particular importance to this investigation. That would be Criteria A, where the generality of buildings in the area are substandard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or possess any of such characteristics, or are so lacking in light, air, or space as to be conducive to unwholesome living or working conditions. We're going to look at Criteria B, where abandoned commercial industrial buildings, the discontinuance of the use of buildings, or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls, or plaza... Plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial buildings, the abandonment of such building or buildings with significant vacancies of such buildings or buildings for at least two consecutive years, or the same being allowed to fall into so great a disrepair as to be untenable. And then we're going to look at, excuse me, Criteria D. Criteria D is an obsolete layout and design with buildings or improvements which by means of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangements or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, dilatorious land use or obsolete layout, or any combination of these or other factors are deemed detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. So we're going to focus on those three aspects of the statutory criteria. Now, for the record, the property that we are looking at is 101 Thanet Road, further identified as Block 5502, Lot 4 by Princeton Tax Records. It's a 15.01 acre tract. It's irregular in shape, odd shaped, and there are two buildings with approximately 60,000 square feet of gross floor area for each. These are three-story buildings. They're constructed between 1982 and 84, and they're pretty typical of the type of office development you saw back then. The buildings are three-story. They have brick exterior with window design that limits the amount of natural light entering the interior center spaces of the buildings. They were designed with floor plans that had a single tenant in mind, so that when you look at how the building is laid out now, and I was in the buildings, you can see that they have columns all over, wide corridors, a lot of dead space, and it really was designed for single users, which was also typical of the 1980s office construction. But... And they also had... They had low ceilings. The ceilings are like at eight feet. And again, conventional design is really looking for more light and air, more efficiency in design build in terms of energy. Today, the standards are for higher ceilings, more light. All of those things are being factored in to make current office buildings more competitive as opposed to the buildings that were built back in the 80s. There are 427 parking spaces associated with these two buildings, and again, what that does is it... You'll see a lot of dead, impervious coverage associated with that because of the office parking requirements that drive the parking demand for that use. The site itself has a number of existing easements which bisect the property. They include a 20-foot wide sewer easement in the southerly portion of the site, another 20-foot wide sewer easement along the site's westerly border, a 15-foot wide water main easement between the two buildings, and another easement in the easternmost section of the property, and a small storm drainage easement off to the southerly portion of Thanet Road. There are some environmental constraints that are also associated with the southerly part of the property. These include streams that extend in an east-west direction through that portion of the site, and there's a 100-year flood plain area encompassing the southernmost portion of the property, and then there are wetlands in the northeasterly portion of the site. So there are some limitations to the property. Now, one of the things that we also evaluate is, you know, what are the... What does the master plan of the community have to say about the parcel? And when you look at Princeton's master plan, you notice that the site, of course, consistent with the use of the property, is designated under the land use plan as an office research site. Now, the 2017 Master Plan Reexamination Report is an important document because then it talks to how there's a shortage of vacant, developable land in the community, and how there are many competing interests and needs of the community, and that there was a need to ensure that whatever development occurs because of this scarcity of land, either through development of what's left or redevelopment, is compatible to those needs and is sensitive to the community in the context of where these redevelopments are occurring. Interestingly, the reexamination talked about how office market is moving towards Route 1 and gravitating towards larger centers, downtowns, and it's kind of bypassing, the market's bypassing these outlying areas. And the report, as a result of that analysis, specifically pointed out that, given reduced demand for office space, especially in the outlying areas like Thanet, consideration should be given to identifying alternative sites and evaluating the appropriateness of other land use designations in the ordinance. So there was already an acknowledgement that there was changing office demands in the market, and it really relates to telecommuting, for example, hoteling of office space, and other demands that are reducing the reduction of the need for this kind of facility, especially the way it is configured. The current zoning of the property is OR 2, which permits office and research and accessory uses associated with that, and it requires a five-acre minimum lot size. Now, when we look at all of the factors that describe the property and compare it to the statutory criteria that I described earlier, we can conclude that the study area, this particular site, displays characteristics that satisfy the statutory criteria and consequently justifies the designation of this as a non-condemnation redevelopment area. We believe, and it's expressed in the report, that it satisfies Criteria A and D regarding obsolescence. Again, this building, it was built 30 years ago. It just doesn't fit today's market, and I'll get into that in a little more detail in a moment. And it also satisfies Criteria B. This property has suffered from significant vacancies, particularly in the last two years and even before that. Right now, I can tell you that there's approximately only 18% of the total floor area of this site is being occupied by office use, and that is not sustainable in terms of maintaining the property in a manner that is economic. There are things associated with the building that make it obsolete. It needs a new roof. It needs a new HVAC AC system. The interior of the design of the building is such that it would take a significant investment of funding to try to reconfigure and readapt the interior space in a way that would make it attractive to today's market in terms of modern office use. And it gets to be a spiraling cycle where, as the market drifts away from the property, as it gets more expensive to maintain the property in its present condition, and because it needs so much investment where there's no market to sustain it, the building stays vacant. And as it stays vacant, it starts to deteriorate. And this is not just a phenomenon unique to Princeton. I can tell you, as a planner in my office, we are dealing with this statewide. This is something that is happening all over where communities are now reevaluating office buildings that were built in the 80s, and how do we repurpose them or redevelop them in a way that would benefit the community and get away from its obsolete use that's really not serving much of a purpose? So again, this is part of a trend that we're seeing statewide. It's not unique to Princeton, but clearly this is one that we're familiar with in my office particularly. Now, why, again, let me reiterate, why we think A, Criteria A, B, and D are relevant here for this study? Due to the extensive weakness of the office market, as noted in the Princeton recent Master Plan Reexamination Report, the demand for this office space is extremely limited. I think the lack of rental here, the fact that only 18% is occupied, speaks for itself in that regard. The rehabilitation of these existing buildings is not really feasible due to the building's characteristics, such issues as the design of the buildings, the interior space, the way it's laid out, the columns. When you walk in, you actually see brick everywhere that would have to be torn out at great expense. All of that, such issues as the design, needed mechanical replacement, roof replacement, and lack of other amenities that are part of today's marketplace. For example, the need to provide for cafeteria, to provide community space, the need to make it energy efficient. These are not opportunities that are readily available to this property in a way that could be sustained financially. And then again, what really drives this whole investigation is these factors indicate a concern about the continued functionality and economic viability of the facility, as reflected in the long-term high vacancy rates of these buildings, and leads to the finding that the buildings may be considered in a state of obsolescence due to the rigid design and the practical difficulty of adaptive reuse of these buildings. So for those reasons, we feel that the conclusion is warranted, that this site does in fact meet the statutory criteria A, B, and D. Now, there are a couple of addendums that we would like to incorporate into the November 18th report. I believe that a sheet has been handed out to you, and I've testified to all of these, so the report would be amended to reflect my testimony tonight. On Page 1, Paragraph 5, Line 4, we'd like to insert after the words "site," physical characteristics, the building's significant vacancy rates that have been consistent for more than two consecutive years. Page 4, Paragraph 2, Line 1, the reference to nine statutory criteria is corrected to read eight criteria. The original report dated November 18th referred to a Criteria I. That was subsequently taken out of the finally adopted legislation. They incorporated the vacancy rate standard into B. So we need to correct the report to accurately reflect the statute as it was adopted by the legislature. On Page 8, Paragraph 1, the I criteria, as noted again, has to be taken out. On Page 9, the source for the data on Table 1 should be amended to be CBRE, which is the real estate company from which we derive the information. Page 19, Paragraph 3, Line 2, insert the following words afterwards, conditions being substandard, Criteria B, regarding buildings with significant vacancies for at least two consecutive years. And then the last addendum to the report would be Page 20, Paragraph 5, Line 3, insert between the reference to the A and D, Criteria B. So with those amendments to the report, that would conclude the investigation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yes. Thank you. Are there questions? Anyone?
Go ahead, Mia.
Could you just summarize what you just said again? Could you just summarize the comments you just made about those changes?
About the...
About the changing legislation that...
Oh, what happened was, in the original legislation, there was a criteria I, which talked about a new criteria where you could designate shopping centers, office parks, and such, if they were vacant for, and it had a number of 50% for more than two years. That was struck from the laws when it was finally adopted, and it was incorporated as new language into Part B. So, I doesn't exist anymore. It's all in Part B.
I see, so that's why you didn't designate...
Yeah, it's, it needs to be corrected, is really what it boils down to.
Got it.
Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, James.
Curious about your thoughts on the criterion H, smart growth consistency, and why that was not included as a recommendation? I know we only need one out of them.
We, it, it, there has to be a stronger nexus to the principles of smart growth, you know, where you're using compact design forms in close proximity to mass transit, creating a walkable community, all of those kind of factors, and while those elements are there with this, we didn't feel there was a strong enough nexus to include it. If you feel that there is, we can discuss that, and certainly, the board has a right to incorporate that if you feel that is strong enough. But we focused on the most meritorious criteria, the one that we thought would be upheld.
Yeah, the courts have cautioned against overuse of criterion H, just for the reasons John gave. It could be easily abused. So, I think caution is the word of the day.
Yeah, it's, if you relied solely on H, you probably should rethink whether there should be a redevelopment area, because it's, it's a planning concept and rarely used, frankly.
Thank you, and thanks, Jerry.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm sure that you've all understood this, and also, we have a number of people who have sat here very patiently, waiting for the public portion, so let me open the meeting to the public, and if you'd come forward to this podium and give your name and address, that would help. You must, you must have had something in mind when you came to this. All right, if there's no one who wishes to speak to this at this point, let me close this. I had one question. You said, "I know that there are a lot of easements that go through this, a fair number, and my recollection, having sat on the site plan of this in 1982, is that there's a lot of water that went through here and was channeled in various ways. If the new water regulations come in before we get to this, would that have any effect on this, or is this something that we can work out in the redevelopment discussion?"
It's a difficult question to answer, because we have to see how the NJDEP is going to implement those new regulations, and whether a window will be given to phase in that kind of storm management directive. You know, there are a couple of factors. I mean, normally, and I'll defer to your board attorney, it's usually covered under the time of application rule, but that doesn't always apply to NJDEP, so you have to be careful about how that works, so I would have to defer to what the final rules say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Shannon, did you hear something?
There's a third property on that site, and I'm just wondering if you can, if you have any explanation of why that wasn't included.
I can't offer that explanation. The process is that you can only evaluate what you're directed to by the governing body, because the local redevelopment housing law is such a powerful statute in terms of what it allows a municipality to do. So, I really can't opine on something that, A, wasn't authorized for us to look into as a board and as your consultant, and B, hasn't been analyzed, and so, I can't really address that.
Okay.
I just have a couple of cleanup items. Page four, the second paragraph, "An area qualifies as an area 'in need,' so you'd want to add the "in."
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Then on page 14, second sentence, "These include," is it "a stream" or "these include streams that extend"? I think it's just one stream, isn't it, John? Or Michael?
I didn't hear you.
On page 14, in the last paragraph, second sentence, the sentence reads, "This includes streams that extend," so I think it should be a stream that extends? Or multiple streams? Okay, we'll correct it, so, okay.
We do have an environmental map. We could, there seems to be two branches to it.
Okay.
That's why we wanted to cover it as streams.
Okay, so then we'll change the "extends" to just "extend," take out the "S." Then on page 16, first sentence, "The Princeton Master Plan places the site in," take out the "N" before "and."
I already caught that one. Got that.
And then the main thing is on page 20, in terms of the following offered for consideration. Number two, I would change that, make it a little stronger. Based on our analysis, we recommend, because this is a recommendation going to the governing body, not that it considers the designation, it's going to consider the designation, I think based on our analysis, we recommend that the area be either designated as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, or using the terminology of the statute, determined to be a non-condemnation area. So, just really, the idea is just to take out "considered," because they're already doing that.
And you want reference to non-condemnation?
I think we should put that in.
No, no, we shouldn't.
And that's it for me.
Okay. Anything else? Michael?
Easy enough.
All right, Jerry. Now, we've heard the explanation, we've seen the report. Is this the point at which we make a recommendation to the council? Would someone like to try to phrase that, or do you want to phrase that?
I can phrase it if you'd like. I would suggest that the motion be that, motion to accept the report is modified tonight, and to recommend to the council that the designated area be determined to be a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Okay. Everyone heard that?
Yes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded. Do you want to call the roll on that one, please?
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texorni?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stankowitz. All right, this is the second item under hearings. This is a concept discussion, and this is a rezoning request from the Hun School. Michael, if you want to walk us through your memo, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. What you have this evening before you from the Hun School of Princeton, well, actually, this is called a hearing, but it's actually a discussion, because it involves a request from the applicant to the board to consider a rezoning. The properties in question are two adjoining sections of land and properties that are, they're adjoining the existing campus of the Hun School. One is a parcel that's immediately east of the campus. It consists of the current headmaster's house, it's used for residential purposes, it's known as the Ralph S. Mason House, and it's currently in the R2 zone. The request is for this parcel and a large piece of open space, which is actually in the inside, at the interior of a block, just immediately west of the, of the campus, which, it's on the block between Edgers Town Road and Russell Road, and it actually comes, fronts a little bit of it, fronts on its westerly side on Hun Road, and that's open space, and that's also R2 zone, that both parcels, the proposal, the request is to consider them being put into the E4 educational district, so that they can be used for academic purposes. Now, actually, to clarify, the parcel that, where the Mason House is, would be the building, the existing house, you'll hear details about that from the applicant, would be used, instead of for residential purpose, would be used for academic activities, cultural activities in support of the educational mission of the Hun School. And the proposal for the long, grassy area that's at the center of the block on the, on the westerly side of campus, would be for it to remain as open space. It's referred to as the Green Common, and the idea would be that that area would be added to the overall floor area ratio of content of the entire campus, and this would allow for some expansion of campus facilities in the future, but not on the Green Common. The Green Common would remain as open space. So, the applicant will be discussing this proposal with you to change the zoning, and just to keep in mind that the surrounding area is largely single-family residential, and then, of course, you have the campus, which is, which is E4 educational district.
Okay. Any questions for Michael? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any comments or questions from staff?
Nothing for me.
Jerry?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All right. We're ready to hear from the applicant.
Thank you very much. My name's Richard Goldman of Drink, Ribbit, and Wreath. Happy to be here, here often. I've represented the Hun School for many, many years. My kids went there in the early 90s, and they kept me on after they graduated. We're here for, actually, two things today. We've called it a concept review, because we wanted a notice under the 200-foot list, so the folks in our community would have an opportunity to see what we're asking. I can tell you, we also held a community meeting at the Hun School. We did that on Tuesday. We invited our neighbors, they came to Russell Hall. Of course, we had some coffee and cookies, but we went through this presentation with our neighbors as well, and I think, you know, generally, well-received. So, what we're going to do tonight is not only talk about the zoning request, but in that context, we're going to give you a little update on our master plan. We had been working with Clark, Caton, and Hinch, John Hatch, who's our architect, for several years now, to develop a master plan. We presented it to this board last August, in, I think, July or August, in an informational, and when I say last, 2018, not this past. So, it's been about a year. Some projects have already been implemented on that plan, and we're now here because we've got a pretty great opportunity. I think all of you are familiar with the campus, so one of the challenges of the campus that's been there since the early 1900s is that we're landlocked, and we're in a neighborhood, we have a finite amount of acreage, we have no real possibility of expanding that acreage in any significant way. And our challenge is to continue to find, be able to provide the best education with the best facilities that our people expect from an independent school like the Hun School. There's lots of other independent schools, and we're rich in independent schools in this area, and they're all very competitive, and as time goes by, things like sciences, theaters, all of that is challenging, and you've got to continue to provide facilities. The last several projects that we've been here for, for site plan approval, the Global Commons, and most recently, the enhancements to the theater, and the building of several, you know, up-to-the-minute laboratory facilities for the kids, all of these projects are done with no intent of expanding the school. They're to keep up with the demands, the need to keep providing better and better facilities, so. John will go through the master plan with you in a minute. Also, I have John Broome, who's the headmaster here, he'll tell you a little bit about why this is so important to us right now. But the Mason House, which is the larger sort of yellow piece on the right side, if you're familiar with the Hun School, the Mason House has been the headmaster's house for years, and although it's in a residential zone, and it's a house, it really is not designed or suited for sort of a residential unit for the public, because it's so integrated into the campus. If you know that campus, the house faces right across to Russell Hall, and there's a row of perpendicular parking all across the frontage that's used by the school. What happened was Betty Johnson decided to donate her home on Edgestone to the school. That's two houses off the campus, and she did that with the expressed intent that it become the headmaster's house. It was a gift we couldn't refuse. I mean, phenomenal. Betty's been a longtime friend of the school and supporter, and we were just thrilled. That allows the headmaster to move to the Betty Johnson House, the Johnson House. It leaves the Mason House vacant. Now, we didn't know this was coming, although we were sort of getting ready to plan for this, but now, it came to the top of our pile, because now we have the actual capacity to do what we do, what we need to do. And what John will tell you is, right now, we have a highly... And what John will tell you is, right now, we have a highly inadequate infirmary at the school. This is a boarding and day school, have a significant boarding population. You wouldn't want to have to go to our infirmary, I'm embarrassed to tell you. It's in Russell Hall, it's a tiny space, there's no rooms for a sick kid to spend the evening, the night, if they're sick and they need to be under the care of a nurse. So, right now, you have to go back to your dorm room and, you know, where your roommate is while you're sick. One of our real great wishes is to take some more space in Russell Hall and make this into a real infirmary, and John can explain a little bit about why it's such a particularly good area. To do that, we need to displace our advancement office. Advancement offices are, as they used to be called, development office, very important to the school, there's about 10 employees, and they, you know, the, the sort of, the light bulbs go off, and we say, boy, the Mason House would be a perfect place to move the development office. They're all there anyway, they all park there anyway, it's not, we're not adding any people to the office, but we could use the Mason House. Why is this significant? Well, the Mason House, right now, is zoned R2, which means we could not use this property we own for that use, because that's an educational use. A headmaster's house is still a residential use, you could do it. So now we have an empty, pretty nice building. It's empty. I don't think we could sell it, I don't think it's really sellable, nor would we ever want to, because for generations, it's been literally in the heart of the campus entry. And so we'd like to be able to find a good use for it that's quiet, that does not add any imposition on our neighbors, and this seemed to be the, the, the perfect use for it. And so, John and John, we'll go through this with you. The only other point I wanted to make was about what we call the mall or the commons, and that's the long, yellow strip. I'm sure many of you have seen it, it's just an incredible asset to the school. It's about three acres, it's 3.66 acres, it goes way down, it just gives you a beautiful view when you're out in that sort of core area of the campus. But it's also zoned R2. And we recognize that that should never be built, but we... Anyway. We, we, we definitely recognize that should never be built upon, but at the same time, we would like to be able to use the value of that acreage in the school. We thought this was a very creative way to deal with some of the issues we face over the next 25 to 50 years of being landlocked. There's FAR that could be moved from that mall if it was zoned E4, as is the rest of the campus, to, for future development of our master plan, but recognizing that that still needs to be maintained, we proposed to then deed-restrict that land in perpetuity for no development, to remain as open space. So we're not looking to build there, and I want to, you know, we, we try, we explain this to our neighbors, absolutely no intent to build there. In fact, this will make it even less likely that you could build there because today you could subdivide it and put a house on it or something. That's not what we want, we don't think anybody wants that, but we own it, we'd like to be able to get some value out of it, and we need that FAR over time. So, we, we think in the 50-year, 100-year range, we've been there for over 100 years now, and we see, you know, that need. So, that's, that's in summary while we're here. I, I thought I'd have John Broome come up, who's the headmaster, and tell you a little bit about the need and what we hope to achieve.
Yeah, maybe that's easier. Good evening, everyone. Thanks very much for your time and attention tonight. My name is Jonathan Broome, B-R-O-U-G-H-A-M. I'm the headmaster of the Hun School. And first of all, thank you for all the time and attention you've given us over the years. I know you've been through a couple of iterations of our campus master plan, and you've worked with us as we've continued to try to bolster our institution. And as Rich said, it's so important for an independent school to stay current, to meet the needs of its students. We promise our parents that we're going to give them the best education possible, and part of it is having a facility that really helps with that. And as a partly boarding school, we see ourselves really as parents of our students, and that even doubles the responsibility we have for their care. And as Rich said, it's a very competitive environment out there in schools as well. So, I begin really with the institutional needs we have that are met by this plan that Rich just discussed, and the first one in my mind is the infirmary. If you could see the infirmary, it's tiny, there is no room for a student to stay overnight or for a nurse to stay overnight to care for that student. It's very crowded most mornings, kids spill out into the hallway, there's very little privacy for a student. So, we have students from 20 countries all over the world, as well as New Jersey and along the eastern seaboard. Those families count on us to give good medical care, to keep their kids healthy, and it's just not really the best in that infirmary at the moment. So, the ideal space for an infirmary would be what's now the advancement office, it's several times bigger, it would afford us rooms for kids to stay overnight, with a nurse to stay overnight, better examination room space, waiting room space, all the things that kids would need. So, we get to make that change internal to the building with very little disruption and in an ideal location if we move the advancement office over to my present house, the Mason House, which is a perfect place for them to expand, they're also cramped for their office space, and then I move out to this beautiful new Johnson House, which is a pretty good deal for me to, but for the school, I think the infirmary and this office space is, is a big priority. And it's always been important for us to have good relationships with our neighbors, we pride ourselves on that, that's part of our responsibility as well, and that we can do this with really no disruption, no change to enrollment, or parking, or traffic, or noise, I think is, is another big virtue of this plan, so. Any questions for me?
Anyone?
In the presentation that was made, you had the Mason House for visual arts, but you have, but you also want to have a development office and an infirmary also in there too?
Yeah. Let me just explain that. The infirmary stays in Russell Hall, which is the existing build, the main building. The development office moves across to the Mason House. And you'll hear about it, but the rest of the potential uses for that property are well into the future. It's part of the master plan brainstorming for the future. So, we've looked at, using some important criteria, what use could go there, let's say 10, 20 years out, that met a series of criteria. One, would still have to be a quiet use. Two, it would have to not add to any imposition, traffic, things of that sort. Three, it would have to be designed in a sensitive way, so it was consistent with surrounding neighbors' height and, you know, articulation of structure to make it look, appear to be separate buildings. So, that's a brainstorming exercise, and John Hatch will go through it with you. It's not planned for now, we're not here for site plan approval of anything. We're here just for the two little rezonings, and all of the work that we will do will be interior to the existing buildings. But at least we could then use the Mason House. In 10 years, 15 years, and we don't know, at some point in the future, could that be the site, the, where the Mason House is now, could that be the site of an art gallery? That was one of the brainstorm ideas, that would be a nice, quiet use. Art studios, places to hang paintings, just another welcoming point to the campus. It's possible, but I can tell you, and John, you can confirm this, by no means is that part of any current, you know, plan to do. John?
That's exactly right, Rich. No, we don't have a, a plan for that, we don't know for sure if that would even be the kind of building we'd want for that purpose, and we're many years and many millions of dollars away from any contemplation of that.
Any other questions? Can I just, you're talking current time and the future 10 years from now, and it sounds as though the Mason House building itself is not eventually going to survive into the next century or half-century if you're planning these other uses.
That's possible.
You're thinking of putting up a building that would, would still be comfortable with a residential neighborhood?
That would be our, our commitment, yeah. What little thought we've really given to this building, it's in a very, kind of a sketch form right now, would be to have the back face of it that would be facing the neighborhood, really not be an active place, it would very much face inward towards Russell Hall, it'd be a building that would not require independent parking, would not be noisy or attract crowds or really...
But what you're working with is a hypothetical building rather than the building that's there now.
Correct, yes.
And, but what you're asking for the zoning for is for the building that's there now.
Correct. Yeah, well, I mean, we're asking for conversion, and, and when we say rezoning, it's really a change to the zoning map that brings the E4 zone, which exists everywhere else on campus except these two lots, just to bring these two lots into the E4 zone so that we could use it for educational purposes, part of which would be the development office. And that's what we would use it for, for now. We can redo buildings on the campus as the, you know, there are dorms on campus that were built in the 70s. They're probably going to need some attention when we can raise the money to do that. So, we, we recognize that there's potential, but what I think we wanted to emphasize is, being kind of a responsible and good neighbor, we know that this lot, the Mason House lot, is a perimeter lot. It's, it's the line between ourselves and our neighbors, and we know that whatever happens in the future there, it's going to have to be quiet and integrated into the sort of the landscape of the neighborhood. But again, we have no, I mean, we can make this representation, we have no plans for that other than to move the advancement office, the development office, into that, that structure, and no exterior construction or anything of that sort.
So you mentioned that you're interested in incorporating the mall for a variety of purposes, including increasing the FAR potential, and I was just curious what the implications of that might be. I mean, are you planning on building up in some of locations?
Actually, we don't have a plan to build up, but we also recognize that our boarding students, the dorms that they live in, which were designed, as I said, in the 1970s, they have rooms, or 60s, in the 60s, they have rooms, they have very little gathering space. So there might be lounges that are added onto that building. It's also possible, and again, I'm only talking about what's possible, there could be a second level to the dorm that might free up other space elsewhere. Nobody's looked at this or designed it. What we do know is, over time, and we've learned this and we've been before you, over time, we, we seem to always need a little bit of improvements, like the theater, the last one we did, it became quite apparent that the kids should have a dressing room for the theater instead of dressing in the hallway, that there needed to be a gathering place in a glass, a glass enclosed, because it was nice, but a place where people can come out of the rain before they actually walk into the theater. Okay, so that added some FAR to the campus. We're not talking about a huge amount of FAR. The mall at 3.66 acres would add about 25,000 square feet of FAR. So it's not like hundreds of thousands, and if you start spreading that amongst the buildings and a bump out here and a addition there, it's not really a huge amount. But again, it's, it's, it's really for our, partly for our future. So there's two goals here. One is to get the Mason House into a usable place. We own it, we'd like to put an office in it, so that's very important. And two, on the long term, as we think into, long into the future, that extra floor area would be very valuable to us.
And will you have any use for the mall otherwise, or are you just going to leave it essentially unused?
It's unused, although the, the best, the best use of the mall, I can tell you, because I've been to this now about 25 times, at graduation, each year, all of the faculty and administration line up in a big circle down that mall.
We've heard this from you already.
Right, it's great. And all the kids march down and shake hands with every faculty person, all the administration in that mall, and the parents are sort of a little higher up because the mall comes down, and they all sort of get to stand and watch. It's, it's about the only thing, other than kids maybe having a catch, but that's about the only actual organized use of the mall.
Rich, could I ask just real quickly how the mall came about, it, it's in relation to the school? It's such a strange lot configuration.
I, I don't think anybody really knows how, how that happened, you know, we, yeah, John has a theory.
Well, I can, I can tell John, yeah. Actually, it was the landscape architect who worked on it originally was Samuel Parsons, who had been director of the parks in New York City and so on, and he was working for Russell at the same time that he was bidding on the mall in Washington.
Wow.
And that's...
So he wanted a mall, right?
He wanted, he wanted one of his mall designs to, to be accepted, and that's the story I've always heard.
Because it is odd, I mean, you...
It is, it is odd, but...
It's so odd.
I mean, he, he was a great landscape designer, and my favorite thing is that he advertised in papers that people in Princeton should sell him their largest trees and they would all be moved out to this estate.
Yeah, amazing.
So, he did.
It makes the campus look so bucolic and so much bigger than it is, because you have this incredible long view.
Well, the scale, the scale of the landscaping is, is much larger than the subsequent development demands.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, the school's been very, very successful in the last decade or so, and been successful at raising funds for some of the buildings that they need, and I think you can see that what we're building now in the last several projects has always been first-class, really, really well-designed, you know, great architecture, thoughtful, and, and very useful to the campus. The Global Commons has been an incredible asset for the student body for encouraging sort of a little bit of global interaction, and also places to be for the kids. Our, our probably biggest weakness is there aren't a lot of lounge areas for the kids, and you need that these days. That's how millennials work, I'm told, they have to live in a big, open space, right? Maybe we should have John give you a little run-through of the master plan.
Here we go.
Good evening, everybody. Is this on?
All right, sort of.
Sort of, okay, there we go. My name is John Hatch, I'm a principal with Clark Caton &amp; Hinch Architects. We did the master plan for the Hun School back in 2010. We were the architects, just a plug for the fabulous renovations to the Buck Building, we, we were the architects for that. And then we have also worked with the Hun School on, on the update to the master plan. And so I'm going to just briefly talk about the master plan and sort of what's happened since the last time we presented to you, and then it's, and then kind of fold in this, this request into that presentation. And I think we had given you the, the PDF with a printout of the, the master plan. This is going to be in a different order, so don't, don't try to follow in that because we've rearranged the pages and added a few things just to make it more sense for, for tonight's request. So the, the master plan had nine areas of focus, and after 2010, significant progress was made in a number of them with the Will family, Global Commons, with the renovations to the Buck Building, and in 2015, a new look was, was... And in 2015, a new look was, at the master plan was done, and six areas of focus were identified. And that's really, those six areas are in this update to the master plan. So the campus as it now stands, and these are the six projects that were identified in 2015 and then in the master plan. Some of this work has already happened, so a new grandstand has already been built, so this improved the spectator experience at the turf field. You have seen and approved, and now there are building permits in place for the improvements to the science and technology facilities at the Hun School. And this is all these improvements, which include four new Science Center labs, three renovated labs, and the relocation of college counseling, that was all interior to the Cheesebro Academic Center. So you've seen that, and that is now, I'm told, that ground has been broken for this project. The second one that you've also seen is improvements to performing arts at Hun. And this is major improvements, upgrades to the theater itself, adding some facilities, including dressing rooms and other important facilities, and a small addition, about 2,000 square feet, a new lobby for the theater. So you've seen this, and this is also now has building permits and is under construction. So the two sites that we're talking about, as you've heard, the Mason House and the mall, and you can see the relationship to the Johnson House. So the Mason House, just to remind you, directly across from Russell Hall, and there's the parking right in front of it, and here's a closer view of it. And as you've also heard, one of the six priorities in the update to the master plan was improving the infirmary. And it really is, the current space is very small and inadequate for, especially considering that there are boarding students at the Hun School. So the idea is to, as you've heard, is to vacate the development office, the fundraising office, which is located in this wing in the Hun School, in Russell Hall, facing out toward Wyonan, and relocate them to the Mason House, so that, so there's the wing in red right there. And that is the same wing from another angle. And there are a few reasons why this makes sense for the infirmary. So it's the right size, it's also in an ideal location in terms of access for emergency vehicles, so it's right, the service courtyard is right here, and it's quite easy, there's already access from that courtyard into that wing, so if ambulance or, you know, specialists needs to come to the school, it has very, very easy access. So the idea is to reconfigure those offices to provide isolation rooms, you've heard about the need for that, so students who are sick don't go back to their rooms and infect their roommates. Overnight sleeping rooms for boys and girls, an overnight room for the nurse, you can see where the emergency medical entrance is proposed, a clinic for students during the day, waiting area, office for the medical director, restrooms. So adequate and state-of-the-art facilities for the infirmary. So any questions about that before I go on to the kind of future projects?
Well, just quickly, I'm just a little bit confused, this, the infirmary is already...
No, this is...
It's not already in Russell Hall?
It is in Russell Hall, but in a different location. So it's right across the hall from this proposed location.
Okay, thank you.
And that's going to get, you know, will also help, I mean, it turns out the admissions is undersized, so they'll then backfill into what's now the infirmary, most likely. Okay, any other questions on the infirmary and Mason House? So the future projects, as were mentioned, the dormitories Poe and Carter were built in the 1960s and are now, I would say, really are quite outdated, both on the exterior and on the interior. The configuration, double-loaded corridors, small rooms, no lounge, you know, very small, inadequate lounges, so you can see kind of what they look like, concrete block walls, the whole deal. So initial planning has started, you know, in terms of the master plan, of how those two buildings could be improved, how they could be improved to fit better into the campus on the exterior, and then, so some, including some small potential additions, future additions, that would be space for lounges. So that is the idea, is that they would be completely renovated and with some potential small additions, so that there is nice spaces for students to hang out in and students to study and do their work. Okay? And the final project that was identified and further in the future is, for this master plan, was taking a look at what is possible on the Mason House site. It's a relatively large lot, it is... Yeah, just about two acres.
Yeah, 1.98 acres.
And taking a look, thinking about what are potential uses on the site, as you've heard a couple of times, they would need to be quiet uses, no additional parking. So one of the uses that was looked at and that I think you remember was talked about a year and a half ago, was that maybe this is, continues to be the development office and kind of alumni relation office, but then another part of the building would be an art gallery and art studios for students. So again, improving facilities, not providing capacity for additional students, but improving the facilities, basically to keep up with all of the other independent schools in the area and in the region. So the building that was looked at was, again, in a very preliminary way, might be 8,000 square foot footprint on two floors, 16,000 square feet total. The long face would be directly across from Russell and relate in scale to Russell. A much smaller piece would face out toward Edgerstone, and that, in this particular scenario, would be where the development office was. And then the back of it, facing toward the other houses, would be kind of a series of pavilions to kind of break up the scale of the building. So again, this was a thought exercise, and it looks like a complete design, mainly because rendering programs are so great. So this is the front facing toward Russell Hall, and you can see the entry to the, that would be the entry to the development office, and then also into the art gallery, depending on which way you went. At the other end, the slope, the site slopes down, so this shows steps up to this, so this would really be the main entrance for the art studios. On the back, it might get broken down some more, so you'd see kind of pavilions trying to be given more, just a smaller scale. Again, this would be two stories, and, exactly, so to try to keep in the scale of the neighborhood.
And we should emphasize, this is an exercise, this is not a chosen design, it might not look modern as this looks, it might, we don't know yet, but we wanted to at least see what the usability was when we're doing a master plan, just like any master plan, you want to think broadly into the future.
And so, then, an interior view, just to see what might the gallery be like. So, and I think there were two sections, since this presentation was made to you last, two sections were added to the master plan. One was on sustainability, really reflecting thinking that's already in the, has long been in the works at the Hun School, but just putting it into the update to the master plan, talking about all aspects of sustainability, from the educational and program, student programs of sustainability, resource use and recycling, reduction of energy consumption, and generating energy on campus, how new buildings and renovations ought to happen on campus, how the landscape ought to be used, transportation, and how Hun is already thinking about its use of food. The other piece that was added, we've called resiliency, and it's really dealing with emergency situations. And again, this is reflecting work that's been happening at the Hun School for a number of years, dealing with emergency situations, both in terms of how the school deals with it, but also how the school can be of benefit to its neighborhood and the folks who live around the school in the event of an emergency. So I just wanted to let you know that those two chapters, those two pieces that were added to the update of the master plan. So that's the full update, and how the Mason House and the infirmary fit into the ongoing master plan implementation.
Any other questions? Anyone? Yes, Jim?
I noticed in the materials that were distributed to the board, you talk about a new grandstand that was installed...
Yes.
For, at the athletic field. The Princeton Bike Master Plan incorporates what used to be the narrow asphalt path that was at the top of the previous bleachers. So the bleachers were down lower, and the path, which is now at the bottom of the new bleachers, is part of the, of the, I'm looking at the bike map right now, and that section, is that going to continue?
Yes.
I've ridden many times through there and noticed when the new bleachers...
I'm told it's still there, and it's going to continue to be there.
All right. Because the rails at the bottom kind of stick out into the path, so creates a little bit of a hazard, so I'd just like to, obviously, there was some agreement back in the day between the school and the municipality or the township to allow the bike route to continue through the school, just want to make sure that that continues.
If those continue.
All right.
And we'll take a look at what you're talking about and see if there's something we can juggle there with the path.
Yeah, it's at the bottom that they stick out into the path, so...
Yeah, no, sure.
Okay. I have a question, does anybody...
Go ahead.
Okay. I, the only thing that, the thing that concerns me about this, it's not, I shouldn't say only, because it's a fairly significant concern, is the law of unintended or unanticipated consequences, and I'm curious about whether the concept plan renderings that you showed, does that represent the full build-out you'd be entitled to under zoning, the zoning change that you're requesting in terms of scale, in terms of square footage, height, setbacks, everything?
Yeah, I think I can answer that. The, if you add the arts building that you saw in the concept to the Mason House lot, that uses up most of the, actually, it uses up all of the FAR for the Mason House lot, that two acres, plus a little bit reserved from the other, about 3,000, 4,000 square feet more. So that would leave about 20,000 square feet of FAR if the mall was brought into the campus as FAR. That 20,000, for us, would be important reserve for the potential of these future projects. And if you think about it, without that, if we don't have the mall or the Mason House, we're pretty much at the end of our FAR. What do we do? We've got this school, we've got all these kids, we've got to educate them if we need a lounge, or we need a, you know, a couple of bathrooms bumped out somewhere. So what we're trying to do, in the most thoughtful way possible, is find solutions for that problem of being landlocked, in, with the least amount of impact. We don't have to, so we're not saying we need to acquire more acres and have that rezoned, we're just saying there are these two unique lots that are actually in the middle of our campus, just let us use those for our campus. We think that takes us pretty far out towards this long-term master plan. But I don't know what we would do without that. I really, it becomes very problematic to continue to provide the kinds of facilities you want to provide in a school like this.
If you were to get the rezoning on the mall area, would the school commit to using that FAR in the core of the campus as opposed to on the Mason House lot?
So let me, it's certainly something to talk about over time, but just from where we are, just in our brainstorming idea, if we build a 16,000 square foot, two-story, you know, 8,000 square foot footprint, two-story arts building, the FAR that would be permitted on that lot is 13,008, right? So we would need to borrow some, right? Because we, to get to 16,000, we're short by 2,400 square feet. It would be, I think, at this early stage, not a good idea to hamstring that potential, because, so then what do you do? If you need a certain amount of space for the arts and the development office, now you're juggling over a couple thousand square feet, where you have that density. And the thing about the Mason House lot is, for all intents and purposes, it is in the core area of the campus. There's nothing that makes you feel like it's part of a neighborhood when you drive by. And we have that picture where you see the cars parked out front, it's very much integrated into the campus. So I would be hesitant to say we wouldn't move a little, but our intent is not to like take this big lion's share and just put it there, because we need it for the dorms in the future. As we improve those dorms, we're going to need, I'm sure, a few thousand square feet for each dorm for lounge areas and other bump outs. It's not a lot of square footage for a whole campus, and so we would like to maintain that flexibility if we can.
Rich, if I could just follow up on what Louise asked, you showed us a number of potential projects, and we understand, it's all conceptual at this point. If all of those were realized, would that basically use up the additional floor area that you got from the rezoning?
You know, in the end, Jerry, it's going to depend what gets designed. They could, but they, but we would, we would have an intent not to. So, right, our goal would be to use as little of the additional FAR as we needed to, because we might need it in 25 years, right? I mean, that's, that's the way we're trying, thinking through the life of the campus. So let's say we have this now 22,000 square feet of excess FAR available to us, and maybe we used 5,000 square feet to create some lounges for the dorms when we renovate the dorms, or we add a floor or whatever, we use some of it. Our goal would be not to use it all right now, because then what do we do? You know, then we're, this is it for us. I mean, there's not more FAR out there, there aren't other properties out there. But what's unique about this, and why I think this is a very unique situation, is we didn't just go out and buy three or four of our neighbors' houses and come to you and say, could you now change this to the E-zone? These are two lots that have been part of this campus for generations. And just by sort of the quirk of one being a headmaster house, we could use it even though it was in the R-zone, but for all intents and purposes, this was part of the campus. And when you look at that picture, I mean, if somebody, you know, so if I can't use it for my school, what do I have to do? I have to try to sell it. Is somebody going to buy that house with the parking lot in the front yard? I don't think so.
And with a direct path to Russell.
Yeah, and you know, with the kid, you know, it just doesn't work. And what we don't want is for you to feel like, boy, here's a plan to build this giant, you know, skyscraper on. That's not the plan. The plan is to use the Mason House. And we wanted to be honest with you and say, look, we're doing master planning, we're brainstorming, we're thinking about the future. As we know, this school, right now, we don't have a very good art gallery, you know, dedicated art studio space. As things move from stem to steam, you know, the arts are becoming more important in these programs, and we want to be able to meet that for the kids. Everything we do is ultimately for the kids so they get the best education they can.
The site is also relatively constrained with setbacks and other, even though it's relatively large, I mean, it's constrained in that way as well, so.
And we'd have to come here, right? So whatever we propose, we have to come before this board, and we have to have a site plan that's appropriate for what we're presenting.
I wonder if this would be a good point to hear from the neighbors. Did you hear something, Michael?
I did. If I could ask a question before we open it up to the public. I have a question regarding the Johnson House. It's the one component that's really actually an addition to the campus in terms of a functional piece of the Hun infrastructure. I was just wondering, it's going to be in the R2 zone, a single-family residential zone, other than the use, the private use of the headmaster and his family, is that going to be used for entertaining any kind of activity that generates traffic or people walking through the campus? I think we, I think the board would probably want to hear about how the Johnson House will be used in the future.
Yeah, so it's, it's obviously not planned for institutional events or anything like that. But as the headmaster, and one of the values of this house is when you're entertaining a donor or a few donors, you're having a dinner for some trustees, they will be at the house. Like anybody else who lives on that street has folks that come over. It's a very impressive place to bring a donor, but we have no plans, for example, we don't have plans to take a wing of the house and turn that into, you know, a party area or a classroom.
Yeah, I was just, my question was, because very much what you were just saying, a president or a headmaster of an institution does a lot of, you know, entertaining in terms of development and alumni activities and things like that. And this house is quite a bit larger than the Mason House. It would lend itself to that.
And by the way, it has a ton of parking. It's, it's got a huge parking area, so it's, you know, it's not like people are going to visit and be on the street. It's also, you know, as you probably know, it's a double lot. It goes all the way through. One thing that will probably happen, or we're assuming it's going to happen, there is an old swimming pool back there, that's going to probably get filled in. It's just not really usable. But yeah, no, I can't tell you he won't entertain there. He doesn't entertain, it's not like an everyday event. It's once in a while, we have reunions, you might have some of the folks come over, but...
Okay, let me, let me just open the meeting up to members of the public who are here. If you'd like to speak, come up to the podium and give your name and be sworn in. Anyone? Just all interested but not participating? Or you've all heard this whole presentation before? Is that?
That's true.
Is that where we're going or coming from?
In a much more one-on-one dialogue-y sort of thing.
Well, that's, that's what we like to hear, that you've really checked with your neighbors and that you, there is a continuing dialogue. So if no one wants to come forward, let me close things and anyone else, something you'd like to add?
I mean, speaking of the neighbors, I mean, I guess you spoke with them. How do they feel about this potential Mason House, you know, I guess, new building?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think generally, folks were fine with the idea of using the Mason House for the development office. You know, anytime you can say to folks, there's going to be no construction, we're not adding a building today. So I think that part was fine. I think most of the questions came about this, the vision for the future and, you know, what happens is you start to focus a little bit on the actual design of this, you know, prop of a building that we're just line drawing, basically. So we had some discussion about that, and we went through the principles that we've talked about today, that it has to be sized right in terms of height and size, it has to have a quiet use, it can't bring more traffic. And particularly the back, we think is a very important architectural element of whatever building we do so that it is broken down to appear at as small a scale as possible, consistent, I mean, there's some big houses on that block, but consistent with the size of a residential house, right? And I, I think we all parted with smiles, you know, I don't think anybody was upset or angry. I think, I think we've been a pretty good neighbor over the, you know, I can't say it was that way 25 years ago when I started. I think there was a little bit of a different attitude 25 years ago, but I think between Jim Byer and John Broom, these two administrations have worked very hard to incorporate the neighborhood into our discussions and try to make sure the kids are doing the right thing. And I will say, there's a lot less cigarette butts now because they all sneak off and use those jewel things, which is, that's today's crisis is, you know, the kids all have these jewel vapor things that are killing people, but, but at least there's not cigarette butts on the, on the street.
I'm not sure it's an improvement.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree, you know, I'm being facetious, but...
Less, less litter.
There's always something. There was, there was literally no cigarette smoking on campus for a period of time until Camel invented Joe Camel. And after the Joe Camel ads came out, cigarette smoking became rampant again. Now it's drifting a little towards these jewel things. It's why I do this, because it keeps me young, knowing what the, I know what the kids are doing.
Okay.
Are we voting on this tonight, or?
Well, I think we're, we're being asked for a recommendation to council
Oh, right.
that they consider the zoning changes that have been asked for. So I think that's...
So they're the ones that are voting on actual approval?
They're, they're the ones who, who we will send this recommendation to.
Yeah.
So if someone has to put that together.
I think it, it all sounds very reasonable, well-thought-out, and actually exciting. I, I think it's, I think it's great.
Thank you. That's a recommendation. Is that a second amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I do have just one, I guess maybe one or two more questions. Can, maybe this is for you, Michael, or whoever would know. Tell me again, what is the overall square footage building that is, or square footage uses that are permitted on the Mason House lot?
I can tell you that. So in, in the...
That would, excuse me, would be permitted under...
That would be, right. So the E4 zone
Yeah.
has a 0.16 FAR ratio. So that's 0.16. The property, the Mason House lot, is 1.98 acres, and applying the 0.16 ratio, you would be able, as a matter of right under the zoning, to have 13,800 square feet.
30, 800, 30,000?
One, three, 13,800.
13, not 30.
So, so, you know, as you, as you heard, so if you think about a relatively modest 8,000-square-foot footprint, two floors, that's already 16,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, it's not a tremendous amount of FAR. The mall, which is bigger, just because it's so long, that's 3.66 acres. If you apply that 0.16, you get 25,500 square feet of FAR. To us, that's our bank for the future. That's, that's what we're looking at. That's the bank for the future. We have not been able to come up with any other opportunity in our mind, any practical way, to add additional FAR to the campus holdings without much more dramatic impacts, right? And we don't want to do that. We don't want to acquire houses and come to the township and say, please rezone this. We felt this is...
Yeah, I can see those, those two houses between the Mason House and the President's House are, you know, potentially future acquisition of, that, I'm just, I know that's way off, but to me, it's like the natural next step, whether it's 20 years from now or 10 or 15.
Right, but it is, but it raises why I think this one is particularly unique, because this is not acquiring current residences to change them to E-zone.
Yeah.
This is saying, we have lots that have been in the campus for 40 years or more. Let's just designate them what they really are.
Would the town, this is a question for Jerry, Michael, would the town have the ability to rezone or Planning Board to recommend rezoning the Mason parcel in a way that allows certain types of educational uses, but not every type of educational use? Is that...
You'd have to create a different zone.
Yeah, we, it would have to be something different than the E4. It would have to be
Right, which would...
A new E-zone, I guess, with specifically stated uses.
And that, then it raises the spot zoning issues because it's one lot and... I, I think what we've proved is we're doing the right thing out there, and we're not going away. And that's, you know, we're not going to build something crazy in that location. And if we do, whatever we build out there, it's way off. I mean, we're not, we're not talking in the next couple of years.
Well, my, my experience is the future happens just like that.
I know, I've noticed that as I got older.
I mean, just yesterday, I was 25.
When somebody, when my son told me he was 42, I said, that can't, it's impossible.
And as Rich has pointed out several times, obviously, they have to come back with any buildings.
Yes.
And they've made a number of representations as to, you know, how they're going to qualify that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And my final thought is purely a comment, and that's the use of the word resilience and resiliency. You know, these days, in my world, it's always referred to in terms of climate resiliency and adaptation. I've just never heard it used in a context where you're talking about being able to respond to active shooter situations or bomb threats or something. So I'm just throwing that out there. It was a curveball, and I thought when I saw resiliency, you were talking about something very, very different. So I know that's just me, but I thought I'd mention it anyway.
Got it. Thanks.
I think we thought the sort of sustainability was that, climate change and all the rest, and resiliency was, you know, it's, right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we've had further discussion. Anybody else? Do you want to call the roll on this now? What? Where? I'm sorry.
Can I speak?
Yes, if you come to the microphone, we've kind of missed out on the public portion.
It's a very simple question. I didn't hear the motion, what the motion was.
Oh, okay.
The motion is to recommend that council rezone the two sites that are shown in yellow on the, on the screen from a residential to the E4 district.
I was told, my neighbors were told that this meeting, that the nature of this hearing by Elaine was not, that, oh, there would cannot be decisions tonight?
Well, the board is not making the decision itself. It's making a recommendation to go to council, which would, and council would make the decision.
I was, I said what I said.
Jerry, isn't it true that it will come back to the Planning Board if the council, maybe you want to explain the process?
Right. The way, the way it would work is if council takes the board up on the recommendation and makes these map changes, it will, it will introduce an ordinance doing so. That ordinance would then be referred to the Planning Board, which would have to review it for master plan consistency and for any other subject matter area it wishes, and make a recommendation back to council. And then at the second hearing on council, what's called second reading, the council would act and decide whether to adopt the ordinance or not.
Just a second, I want to clarify, what Elaine told me this week was this group tonight could only not recommend it. I'll just say that to the record. Do you have a question for me?
No, if that's, if, if that's the way that you heard it.
Others have been here, if, if they had been told that it was possible, that a recommendation could be to move, to give it to the top council.
So why else would you be here?
I think maybe there was a miscommunication.
Okay, well.
I have one question of council. If the board recommends, if we vote yes on what's been moved and seconded, and the council does move forward with a zoning change with an ordinance, are, is that all the notice requirements still in place for people within a certain distance of the affected area when a zoning change is contemplated?
In this case, yes, because it's a change in the classification of the district. If it was, if it wasn't a change in boundary or classification, there's no individual notice that has to be sent out, but there would be certified mail notice to everybody within 200 feet of the, of the two areas, as well as newspaper publication.
Derek, did you want to say something?
I apologize if I'm not hearing this well, but are you saying there should have been that type of notification to this meeting?
No, 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 that would be sent by the council, by the clerk, actually, of the municipality, if the ordinance is introduced.
But, I mean, we did send mail to, to the 200-foot list to our neighbors around the entire campus for this meeting, which is really not a meeting to adopt or take action to adopt the ordinance, it's just to whether the process should start or not if the council chooses to. And as, as I think Jerry pointed out, that second night at the council is actually a public hearing on full notice for the public to come and speak.
Rich, what do the notice that you sent out say?
It was a pretty complete notice, Jerry. It says, please take notice that on Thursday, December 12th, at 7:30 PM at the Municipal Building, blah, 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 blah. Hearing for a courtesy presentation and review of the new, the Hun School of Princeton update to the master plan of the Hun School of Princeton, located at 176 Edrosen Road, along with a request for a zone change of Block 9303, Lot 1, consisting of approximately 1.984 acres, the Mason House lot, and Block 8203, Lot 111, consisting of approximately 3.66 acres, the Commons Lot, from R2 to E4 zoning districts. And then it goes on to describe the lots that make up the balance of the Hun School and the E4 Zone, all of the different lots. The request for rezoning includes the use of the Mason House for educational purposes to support the mission of the school, including a potential art gallery with art classrooms, meeting space, and office space, and to allow the school to utilize needed FAR potential of the Commons Lot if rezoned to the E4 Zone. Once this needed additional floor area is allocated to the campus, the school will preserve the lot as open space by deed restriction. And then sort of the standard stuff of things that aren't filed can be looked at. Now, in addition to that, as I said, we invited neighbors, we went through this full slide presentation and discussed, and I'm not sure where the confusion came in, but we...
I mean, the notice is quite clear.
Yeah, and we made it clear that you can't adopt a zoning change here tonight, but we're here to seek your support when we go to the Township Committee.
Did you want to say something further?
The beginning of that 107-word first sentence in that notice said, this is a courtesy presentation. A lawyer might have discerned that it's something else.
I'm sorry, it says it's a courtesy presentation of the master plan, and then it says, and it's a request for zone change. There's two different things happening tonight. There's a courtesy review of the, of the... There's a courtesy review of this, of the master plan, because the Planning Board really has no official function to review a school master plan, but we wanted you to know what we're doing. And, and a request for zone change.
Okay. Would you like to call the roll on that? Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texorni?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Sorry it took so long, but thank you. Motion to adjourn.
And make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll second that.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.